Feel free if you all want to move around or stuff where you can see the screen.
Yeah.
If you will move up or whatever. It's like yourself at home.
Yeah, that'd be great because I will be presenting a PowerPoint presentation, but um don't feel like you need to take profusive notes because I'll be I'll be sending out this presentation to all the meeting attendees when we're done.
Do you unplugging? You've got a little round. They look like your nice stuff like microphone. Any disappoint? Okay. Can you hear us?
Yes, sir.
Okay. May call order Van Zant County Commissioners Workshop for Thursday, October the 21st, 2020, at 10:00 a.m. It is a workshop. There will be no action taken during the workshop, no votes. But uh now form is established with Commissioner Pearson, he's not able to be with us today. Neither is Commissioner Milton, but we do have a form present. Public comment, Scott, did anybody ask for public comment? Okay, no public comment. Item number three. I should say we started at 10:03 a.m. Grant Works Virtual Project Introduction Meeting. Mr. Bass, at this point, I would turn it over to you.
Great. Well, thank you so much. I appreciate everyone's time and yeah, appreciate bringing on Grant Works to assist in the reporting and compliance and expenditure of this ARP money. I'm going to share my screen here and move through kind of a high level PowerPoint presentation regarding your ARP allocation, what will what I'll be doing, what I'll be responsible for, and then the different expenditure categories that you can use the ARP money for. I know Sandy sent me over some initial project ideas that Van Zant had, so that's a great start to launching pad to get started with. I'll consider this, yeah, kind of a pro in terms of the project lifecycle, kind of initiating the project. Getting it started, getting folks brainstorming about what we want to do so we can start narrowing it down. And then Grant Works will greenlight those those actual projects that you want to that Van Zant wants to follow through with. So I'm just going to share my screen here. Um Scott, would you allow me in the Zoom to be a presenter? It says host disabled participant screen sharing. Thanks, Scott. Well, is everyone seeing the PowerPoint American Rescue Plan Act project discussion?
Yes.
Brilliant. So as I said, my name's William Bass. I'll be your ARP project manager. So I'm your primary point of contact from this initiation phase to the closing phase whenever we get there. This is my cell phone number. Again, I'll be sending this slide deck out to all the participants here at the meeting, so don't feel like you need to record any of this by pen or anything, and that's my email right here, and this is my mugshot, so. Some things we'll be covering today. I'd like some information I'd like to get, some council days and agenda items. Could you all let me know when those council days occur and what the deadline is to submit agenda items is?
Then we made every other Wednesday. The last will be in the 13th. We'll meet again on the 27th. And then and then it's every other Wednesday. Uh the deadline to get agenda items in is noon on Thursday prior to the meeting.
And some further things we'll go through as we get in here is reporting those those project and expenditure reports that we'll need. That I'll work with you guys to compile and submit to the Treasury Department. We'll have those dates further in the presentation here. I know you definitely want to be thinking about revenue loss. We'll get into that. That allows, if that is to be determined, that allows a much more broader latitude in what you can spend the funds on, especially in terms of infrastructure. I know we have some project types and details that initial project types and details that we'll go over, and then I'm at the end, I'll kind of get everyone's meeting cadence. I do mostly meet with my communities on a bi-weekly basis just to make sure, you know, we're moving forward at a proper cadence and a clip of of moving the different parts of the project machinery. So the total allocation for, oops, sorry, that should be Van Zant, I apologize. Um is for Van Zant is $2,991,944, and this is the Grant Works fee here, 461,300, and then the remainder is $2,536,44. So this is this 2 million, this remainder here is what we have to spend on project.
So that is the correct figures, even though it says Washington County.
Correct. Yeah, I apologize about that, sir. I didn't. Thought I did a control F for Washington. Presentation, but in depth.
But the the numbers are correct.
Yeah, numbers are correct. So some things we want to think about as we move along here is ARPA compliance, procurement, and contracting. I will get a copy of your procurement or purchasing manual and run that by our procurement team to ensure that it is 2 CFR 200 compliant. We do need to make sure that all, yeah, procurement and purchasing is 2 CFR 200 compliant to avoid any risk of clawback in terms of the Treasury Department clawback in the future, because if we're not adhering to that, those 2 CFR 200 standards and procedures, then you know that we are running a risk of of clawback in the future, so we'll make sure that we're in line with a 2 CFR 200 as we move forward. Another thing we'll be doing as we go along is cost tracking. Is there a a contact at Van Zant that I'll be that I could reach out to in regards to cost tracking? Is it the treasurer or the?
Well, you know what? Is I mean, I don't, let me ask you this. What does what what does that? What does it mean? What is involved? You know, what does cost tracking involve?
Oh, just keeping who keeping track of of the money that were be ARPA money that's being spent on projects and so that I can, you know, be in communication with that person. You know, if we're doing whatever we're doing, whether it be radio towers or water infrastructure, any any money being spent on those projects, I'll be need to kept in in the loop on. So I was just wondering who the who the primary point of contact for that would be.
I would say Sandy.
Okay.
The auditor, Sandy Hill. She does everything.
Cool. Yeah, I'm in contact with Sandy right now, so that that's great. Environmental here. So the ARPA funds are not subject to NEPA requirements. However, they can be subject to state and local environmental review requirement. So any construction projects that we might pursue will run by our environmental team and they'll conduct see if there's any environmental reviews that need to be conducted, and that could affect, you know, whether you all want to go forward with those projects or not, because I'm not sure the nature of endangered species or, you know, burial grounds or any of that sort of stuff that we could run into in terms of construction projects in Van Zant County, but that's definitely something we do want to be aware of as we move along in terms of the project costs, because that could could or could not factor into it. It just depends.
Okay, let me let me interrupt you just a moment. Scott, Vicky's trying to get in. Vicky McAllister, our emergency management coordinator. How would she? Yeah. Do what? Okay. Okay. Okay, I apologize.
Oh, no worries. We're on your time. Am I good to go, or should we wait for him to get on?
No, you're you're good to go.
Okay, great. So yeah, so that was environmental. That's something that we'll we'll keep in mind as we if we pursue any construction projects. That definitely could factor in the cost depending on, you know, where the project is taking place and the nature of that area. Acquisition of property easement, federal acquisition requirements will apply per the Uniform Relocation Act. And that includes that includes notices and appraisals. So if we need to do that, we will need to adhere to the uniform relocation. Davis Bacon Laboring Monitoring, I'm pretty positive this will not apply to the projects that you all are doing. For projects that are funded 100% with ARPA funds, I'm not sure if if there's going to be any other funds combined for the projects you all pursuing, but for projects that are funded 100% with your with just ARPA funds, the Davis Bacon laboring monitoring requirements are not triggered until a single project exceeds $10 million. So I don't think, you know, we're going to exceed, we're just going to do one project with your $10 million allocation. We could, but I don't think we are, since, you know, we probably want to disperse it amongst different projects, so I don't think that will be triggered. I'm pretty positive. And if if you guys, if Van Zant, anyone in the meeting here has any questions throughout my presentation, feel free to ask them. Just want to make sure everyone's on the same page and that, yeah, we're all aligned here, so feel free to to jump in or.
Does someone have any questions at this point? Okay, no questions.
Okay. So yeah, now we're going to get into some allowable uses of the funds. I know we had some project ideas already kicking around, and Sandy sent them to me. I have those in this this deck here. But just this will give folks put them in the right frame of mind in terms of thinking about how we can use the ARPA fund. So breaking broken down into these five high level categories. So number one is supporting public health expenditure. Two is responding to negative economic impact of the COVID-19 health crisis. Three is premium pay for essential workers, and central is keyword there, and revenue loss. If there's a revenue loss to be determined, and we have a calculator to help you, Van Zant, and all the communities that we serve to determine if there was revenue loss, you just plug in your your revenue stream inputs, the allowable ones in there, and then it'll spit out your revenue loss that. Whatever revenue loss is to be determined can be used for, you know, a pretty much broader latitude of of projects that kind of expand upon, that kind of go outside the realm of these five categories. And the last is investments in a water sewer and broadband infrastructure. So from this allowable uses of funds here in terms of infrastructure, we only have water sewer and broadband, not roads. However, if we the revenue loss is to be determined, then the revenue loss funds, the amount of revenue loss can be used towards roads or other capital infrastructure project. So that's super important and and really good. So we'll get working on that revenue loss calculation here after this meeting moving forward. So now we'll just drill down into those categories a little bit. Supporting public health expenditures is would be that this first category here on the top line there. COVID-19 mitigation prevention, you know, public health and and safety staff expenses to improve the the design and execution of programs, behavioral healthcare payroll expenses and disparities in public health outcomes. And so some of the guidance that we'll keep in mind if we're going to go down this route is it must show a tie back to the COVID-19 public health crisis or a mitigation of a future COVID-19 health crisis. So here's just some more examples of our public health projects, you know, COVID-19 mitigation and prevention vaccination programs, monitoring, public health and safety, enforcement of any public health orders or communication efforts, expenses to improve the design execution of any existing existing programs, enhancement of health capacity at including alternative care facilities and support for prevention, enhancement of any data, public health data systems you have. So, you know, IT infrastructure that involves public health, capital investments in public facilities. I know I saw something about mitigating the COVID crisis in jails and potential project ideas. So this would fall in into this category, capital investments in public facilities to meet pandemic operation needs. And then ventilation, you know, HVAC is obviously super important in the COVID-19 era in key settings like healthcare facilities or other venues that support mitigating the the COVID-19 crisis. And some some more we got here, some behavioral healthcare. If that's needed, mental health treatment. We have seen a rise in, you know, behave, mental health issues in the COVID-19 era, so this is addressing that that sector. Payroll expenses funds can cover the full payroll and cover benefits, cost for employees or operations, units or divisions primarily dedicated to the COVID-19 response. And so we would need to, you know, if we were going to go this route, justify that they were spending spending a majority of their time responding to the COVID-19 health crisis. So, you know, EMS would be someone that would definitely fall into that category. And disparities in in public health outcomes, support for vulnerable populations to access medical or public health services. So that's just going to have a further breakdown of that first kind of funding category that we can use. So this is the next one, responding to negative economic impact. Some eligible uses are assistance to unemployed workers and affected household businesses, rebuilding public sector capacity, and exacerbations of pre-existing disparities. So this also must show a tie back to the COVID-19 public health crisis, so I definitely, I'm here to work with you guys on on writing this up and and guiding you on how to tie it back and and providing justification to the Treasury Department so that we're in compliance. So if this, I haven't seen a lot of folks go down this route, because it, you know, would require a lot of justification and kind of program setup and just a lot of words. So, you know, this distribution, if we were going to respond to the negative impact, economic impact, either by applying, you know, monetary resources to small businesses or people or tenants. This must be reasonably proportional to the negative impact, economic impact they are intended to address. So there would be a lot of legwork that would need to go into that to justify that this whatever funds are being sent to nonprofits, businesses, or or people that they're reasonably proportional. So I haven't seen a lot of folks go down this route just because that would that would, you know, we're require a lot of work. I would say just to dig, just to digress a little bit, probably about 70% of our communities are are doing infrastructure just because that's just so easy to do, and there's not a lot of you know, super in-depth program development or justification that needs to be done with that. It's kind of like, oh, yeah, that's on there. Yeah, just something to keep in mind that 70% of folks are doing infrastructure projects. So just to break down a little bit further, those negative economic impact projects, as I mentioned, assistance to unemployed workers and affected households, job, you can do job training, just direct aid to households facing food, housing, or financial insecurity, or fund survivors' benefits for family members of COVID-19 victims, direct assistance to businesses, execute loan grant, inpatient assistance, or counseling programs to assist businesses to rebound from the downturn. Again, they would, we wouldn't need to show that they were affected by the downturn, so really you need to get in there on on this category. Rebuilding public sector capacity, so rehiring any staff and replenishing any unemployment resources to pre-pandemic level, so that that could be replenishing your unemployment funds there, thinking about that. Or build internal capacity to successfully implement economic relief program. On this last one, exacerbation of a pre-existing disparity. So any investments in housing and neighborhoods, addressing educational disparities, or promoting healthy childhood environments in those economically disenfranchised communities. I saw this one on you all's list. We do have a lot of folks that want to do this and that are doing it, premium pay. So they must be an essential worker, so they must be having, they must have had exposed themselves to the COVID-19 health crisis, you know, been been in person with people or handling materials, stuff like that. So we definitely want to make sure they're they are an essential worker. Another community that I'm working with passed a resolution because their courthouse was open during the duration of the pandemic. They never once closed, so they classify, they issued a an ordinance to classify all of their county port workers as essential workers. So that's something we can think about in terms of if how we want to distribute this premium pay, because they do need to be essential workers. I mean, another another kind of some requirements in distributing premium pay, it must not exceed $13 an hour, total above 25K, or increase the total pay above 150% of the state or county average annual wage for the same role. I mean, additional requirement that's important to think about in here that we are really harp on with our communities is that in the Treasury Department say, sets states that this can be done retroactively. However, the Texas Constitution dictates that back pay is not allowed. So we, if we do implement this program of premium pay, we highly suggest that it be going forward and that it be paid out weekly to folks that will be receiving it. So that's definitely keeps, you know, the the Texas Constitution off our backs. You know, we have one community who was insistent that they wanted to do a lump sum, which would reflect, you know, retroactively for work done, but that's just, you know, we can only, they can, we can only give advice and, you know, they could take it or leave it. So we do suggest the folks who do premium pay that it reflects going forward, so just kind of be add to their project. So just some definitions of essential workers here, staff at nursing homes, you know, obviously they expose themselves to the the pandemic, workers at farms, facilities, restaurants, janitors, public health and safety staff, truck drivers, transit staff, warehouse workers, childcare workers, social service, basically anyone who had, you know, in-person contact. So you know, obviously IT people or people or folks that work for the county who are working remotely would not qualify as essential workers, and they must be physically present at their job, kind of what I've been saying there. And this must be additive, their regular wages, can be substitute general earnings. And another thing that that's not in this presentation, I definitely should add it, but I'll just speak to it now in terms of premium pay is that the spirit in the Treasury Department's reporting requirements, they really want to focus on the lower wage earners, and they want this money to go, they want this premium pay money to go to low, lower wage earners. So when we do kind of develop this premium pay program, if we want to go down that route, we want to, you know, record, get the the statistics on how much folks were making, what their role was, and, you know, what the average was for that role, so we can show that they are lower wage workers. That's the definitely the spirit of its premium pay. It's rewarding those lower folks in those roles that receive lower wages for their service during the COVID-19. The revenue loss, that next category, so governments may claim lost funds from their total ARP allocation, use them in a more unrestricted fashion. So again, this is great for more diverse infrastructure projects outside of water sewer and broadband. And we do have a formula here. We don't super need to break this down at the moment, but this is the formula and our we have a calculator that, you know, we just get the base year revenue with this would be the base year revenue before the COVID-19 crisis was just 2019. According to the government, the COVID-19 health crisis started January 15th, 2020, and then we plug in these numbers and then it'll spit out our general our revenue losses. This is kind of a little screenshot of of the the calculator here, and we'll get that, I'll get that sent over to Sandy and start working on that, because that'll definitely definitely want to have that before we nail down any specific projects to move forward, because again, that'll give us, you know, more broader latitude on on what projects we can select.
Okay, I do have a question there.
Yes, sir.
Did the state? I've been in several meetings where they said, and I don't remember the number, like three and a half percent or something, have they already calculated a loss per county based on population?
Yeah, so the population is is not a factor in this calculation. We do, you know, they'll it'll, the the calculation will determine the growth rate. And if it is below 4.1%, we will be able to use 4.1% the growth rate upon doing the calculation is comes out above 4.1% or like five or seven, then we can use five or seven. But again, if it's below 4.1, whatever that is, we use 4.1, but if the calculation determines it's above 4.1, we can use that value. Does that answer your question?
It does, because I I've been in meetings with, and I was in one yesterday in Marshall with all the county judges in East Texas, and they they've already, they were throwing, and it may have been 4.1. They said, okay, it's already been calculated. You can use 4.1 as the loss.
Yeah.
But you still have to do the calculations, what you're saying.
Right, yeah, because we, you know, we want to find out if it was above 4.1, because that would definitely, you know, change our revenue reduction number down here, you know, depending on what the growth rate is determined.
If it's below that, we could still come up with to the 4.1.
Exactly, exactly. So if it was 1.0 or 2.1, we could use 4.1. If it was 7.3, then we could use 7.3.
Gotcha.
Um, so this is. So this is, I don't want to get too heavy into this, but this is just just a kind of a breakdown of the revenue sources. That'll go into the calculation here. Again, I'll provide this deck to you guys so we don't have to break our eyes trying to get into this. And the, the calculation, it's a spreadsheet, so it has all of these in here, all these inputs. So revenue loss, how can we use these funds? Again, this gives us some more broader latitude outside of those other four categories to support government services is important, kind of key word here. It can't be, you know, stored away or used to pay off debt or put in, put in any sort of savings account or any sort of that. This money must be used essentially is what the Treasury Department is saying. Something we just suggest to folks is use this opportunity to fund projects that may otherwise not be eligible as an infrastructure project. So any roads or, or buildings or any of that stuff, you know, that's, that's an easy win. Everyone benefits from that, you know, everyone looks good because, you know, those are very visible projects. Some other stuff, I haven't seen anyone I've worked with so far doing this debris removal services. Need debris removal that didn't, wasn't performed due to the lot revenue. Reopen services, libraries, recycling, any government services that closed due or reduced due to the pandemic. Modernize cybersecurity hardware, software and protect any of that critical cybersecurity infrastructure. Any health services, provision of police, fire and public safety services. Or this is a big one, maintenance or new infrastructure, including roads, buildings, any new infrastructure or environmental mediation. So we'll get that, this revenue loss calculated out of the gate here. Because that'll definitely give us more leeway to think about how we want to use this money. This last category is investments in water sewer and broadband infrastructure. As we saw, again, just breaking that down. Funds can be used to fund projects that would be eligible as CWSFR or UWSFR projects. So for this broadband, this is communities without broadband. We, this is the spirit of this broadband portion here. Technology can be installed that will offer reliable hundred megabytes upload and per second upload and download speed. So if we're investing in broadband, we do need to be serving those, those communities that don't have it. Again, here's some further examples of those water sewer and infrastructure. A lot of folks doing this water and sewer infrastructure project. There doesn't need to be a lot of tieback to the COVID-19 health crisis to do this because according, the spirit of this water sewer and broadband being such a, a big category here is that those are the essential services that, that folks need, you know, during the, the being sheltered in place during the COVID-19 era. They need broadband to work from home or go to school remotely and they need, you know, water and sewer. So that's kind of why that's the justification for this category. So with that in mind, there's not a lot of justification that we need to do to do these water and sewer projects. I see a lot of folks doing. So yeah, there's water and sewer infrastructure projects replacing old pipes, lift stations, drainage, upgrading storm sewer facilities, perform tests regarding infiltration, backup power, cybersecurity for those facilities. Cool one there. And then again, the broadband infrastructure and provide underserved or underserved locations with new or expanded broadband access. And that broadband access might, must meet those. If you're delivering it to them, it must meet these speeds. Last mile connection projects or assistance to households to support internet, internet access or, or digital literacy. So here are some initial ideas that Sandy sent over to me that we could start cooking with. Definitely, you know, once we take these ideas, we'll, we'll take these ideas. And then we'll do, also do the revenue loss calculation because that could give us some latitude to think about further stuff. Additional projects that we can use. Again, yeah, that's down here. So that's good. Excuse me. And, and then we'll get, I'll get a prioritized list of the projects. Once we get to that stage from Van Zant, from you all, and then I'll write up, we'll just, the justification and list any risks that might be associated with doing those projects and I'll, I'll, we'll jointly green light them and then we'll proceed with them. So that's kind of how we'll move forward with initiating slash planning the project. So I'll just go through these a little bit. We have, yeah, we have, we have an hour, correct, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. So I'll just go through these a little bit. Just so we can get some more details on this. So yeah, premium pay for county employees. This is, this is good to go. We can move forward with this. So you, this, these five thousand and twenty-five hundred are kind of the, the sums that you wanted to provide to full-time and part-time employees. Is that correct?
Yes. Well, I mean, all, all these projects that you've got up right now, we have not even had any discussion on these projects.
Oh, okay. Yes. Sandy sent me over this list. I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
Yeah, you, you probably said you needed a list and Sandy sent you one.
Okay. Yeah, I, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't necessarily need a list, but yeah, if you have one.
Yeah, because I, I mean, I think there's going to be a lot of discussion.
Yeah, understandably.
The meetings, I mean, when I look at that, I don't even see broadband up there.
Yeah.
Okay. I think there's going to be a lot, I think there's going to be some meetings between the Commissioners Court and, and this list.
Yeah.
I mean, I know we, we, we're not on the same page right there.
Yeah, no, understandably. And you guys do have a, a great chunk of, of money remaining. So yeah, definitely prudent to take as much time with narrowing down and understanding, you know, the cost benefit analysis and, and how we can make the met, the most of your allocated money. These projects, you know, we do have till end of twenty twenty-four to obligate the funds. So the funds must be obligated by twenty twenty-four and they must be December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And they must be extended by twenty, to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. So we have three years to obligate them and five years to spend these funds. So don't feel like you need to make any hasty decisions right now. So I, I definitely respect and appreciate, you know, the time and thinking and decision-making process that, that would need to go into deciding what Van Zant wants to do. So, but this is, I'm not sure who came up with these ideas. But the, these are, you know, definitely all fall into, except the game wardens. When I'm not sure exactly what that would be or how that would, how we would tie that back to the COVID-19 health crisis. But I could definitely get more details on that moving forward. But yeah, I'm just not sure initially where that would fall into the categories that I covered. But definitely premium pay, that one's, that one's good to go. You know, public health and safety. You know, that's, we spoke about that, radio tower systems, yeah, improving nine-one-one, that definitely relates to COVID-19. Investments in jail, you have social distancing, distancing, that's the first category remediation of the crisis. I mean, you can make improvements in infrastructure as long, as long as it's related to mitigating, you know, COVID. We can provide justification that's related to COVID-19. Again, there's only those new infrastructures, that infrastructure projects or addition to infrastructures that don't relate to COVID-19 need to be used with the revenue loss money. Water supply, that's great. That's super easy to do. That doesn't, again, doesn't, as I mentioned, doesn't require a whole, any justification for the COVID-19. So yeah, all, all great initial thoughts that, I'm not sure whoever came up with this was that, that Sandy sent me.
That revenue loss calculator, where do we get that number?
Yeah. So I'll send that out to everyone. It's a spreadsheet. And if you have any questions again along the way, you'll have my number, you'll have my number and my email. Again, the spreadsheet has all the, the revenue still allowable revenue streams are allowed to be entered and it's super easy to use. And then it'll give you, it'll, it'll, it computes itself, which is type in the inputs. It does all the calculations for you.
Another question I have is like on the premium bonus pay there for the employees on top line, it said twenty twenty. Are we moving to the twenty twenty or can it count for twenty twenty one since we're still in COVID? The very top line up there.
Oh, yeah. Premium pay to act it. Yeah. So again, the, the Texas Constitution says that back pay is not allowed. So it will be need to, need to be rendered going forward. So what we're advising communities to do is to have it, you know, added on to subsequent paychecks. So as long as those, those, as long as we could justify that those employees during twenty twenty were essential employees, you know, exposing themselves to the, the pandemic, that would count. That, I think that's what we mean by that during, during twenty twenty right there.
And my question is, if they're working on twenty twenty-one, have they still been exposed to the pandemic?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that, that would, that would count.
What you're going to get into in that situation, you're going to get into what, and I'm just thinking about the jail, jail employees that were subject to COVID within the jail and, and the rate of turnover of employees. You don't have a lot of people that worked through that COVID pandemic. The, that's not employees now. And then you would have some come in because you're saying you can't make it retroactive. You're correct. The state, state constitution will not allow that. So then you're paying forward. So you're paying some that, that just went to work or, or you're paying them for it and the ones that actually worked in twenty twenty.
Don't get it.
They don't get it.
And I got to that, I was riding the fire truck, grassing through twenty twenty and a guy replaced, we got the bonus ticket.
Yeah, correct. Pretty good. Good for you. Okay.
As Judge, these were just what we, I mean, y'all were just talking and no, we had no formal meetings.
That's right. That's, that's correct. No reflection or, no, no reflection on Sandy. You asked for something and she give it to you. And this is discussion that has been discussed and.
With all the NACO meetings that we're having, they said all government employees are considered essential. We're getting two different, you know, we're getting trained on this side and this side. And the NACO says all government employees are considered essential. So, you know, I don't know.
Yeah.
That's going to be a, and I'll just go ahead and tell you upfront, that's going to be a hard sell for the, for the, you know, to pay the employee because, I mean, it'll be a hard sell. Here, here in Van Zant, can't.
Yeah. And, and that's definitely a, a, a premium K pay can be a prickly issue, you know, and it can get political. Who's getting it, who's not getting it, et cetera, et cetera. So that's, some folks don't want to navigate into those waters and some folks are, you know, but they don't care. So depends on just, just what your appetite or.
Would you, and you said looking at the game warden, I know they came in for budget hearings and stuff. And that was some, what Sandy's talking about, that was discussion. Hey, we're not going to give you money now in our budget hearings, but down the road, if, if there's something in this here, we might, we may do, might not do. On the game ward, but I, from what I was getting from you, you was wondering how you would tie that back into the COVID.
Like on the water supplies, we, we have several water supplies here in Van Zant County. Would we need to give each water supply a certain amount or they have to have, how would we do that? We have numerous rural water systems.
Do you lock up or are you thinking?
Oh, me?
No.
I was just listening. Was there a question regarding the game ward?
No, no, there was a question about the water.
Okay.
Okay, Sandy, Sandy said we had several rural water supplies in Van Zant County. Would you give, just, would you just give each water supply a designated amount and said, okay, here's your, here's your amount? Or would it be tied to, okay, you're going to have to show us how you're going to spend the money based on what you had showed us in the previous slides, you know? Or could you just give them a map?
Yeah, we, we, for that water, it must be, you know, we must be doing a, a, a project along those, sorry, forgive me, I'm going to go back here a little bit to the water slide. Yeah. So we must be, unfortunately, we can't just, you know, give them, put money in their bank and, and let them, you know, use it at a future time. That's just definitely the Treasury Department in their guidance for this ARP money is they want it to be used. You know, they don't want folks to be, you know, storing it away or, or they want it to be put out in the community. They want to see it, you know, shovels in the dirt and on the ground. So unfortunately, we couldn't just, you know, provide them with an amount of money. They, we would need to come up with, you know, an improvement that they need to make that falls into kind of some of this, one of these categories here. Or this is not an exclusive list. If they have, you know, a different project, that's not on this list. We can, we can do that as long as it's related to, to water and sewer. But yeah, they, again, essentially they must be doing a project.
Okay. So let me ask you, would you, would you work or would you be the one working with the water companies on this, those infrastructure projects? Or would it be the county? Because we've contracted with you, the water company did contract with you. Would we be the one monitoring? We got in the same situation with the terrorist money. What the government does, they give the county all this money and then they tell the schools and everyone, but if you want some, you're going to get it. Ask the county for it. But yet the county is responsible if it's misspent like this here, if you, if you give the water department money and they don't spend it correctly, who's responsible for paying it back?
Yeah, exactly. So yeah, they, they, you know, that's what, that's what Grant Works is here to do, to, to make sure that we're not to avoid any risk of those situations where it would need to be paid back. And the money was, you know, given from the Treasury Department to the county. So the county would be responsible for paying it back if that was the case. But, you know, that's what, that's where that Grant Works fee comes in is that's what we're here to do is to, to make sure to, to keep an eye out on any red flags or signs along the way that would indicate a possibility of needing to pay back that money. So that's what we're here to do is to prevent that from happening.
Okay, because we have, oh, we have the same situation with broadband. We have broadband representatives here and I, and they have the flexibility to ask any questions if y'all have any questions or anything. But you wouldn't be working directly with them, you'd be working directly with the county?
Correct. Yeah, I'm working with the county.
So going to ask them, would we have to lock out their billing and everything?
Okay. All the expenditures that they have, whether it be water, broadband, does that have to come through the county and the county be responsible for all those expenditures?
Correct. Yes. Correct, yes. Uh but I'll I'll be working with the county and and tracking and and be involved uh in those expenditures also. I'm just, I'm I'm on you guys' team. I think, I'm the, I'm on the bench.
Okay, CIP uh uh cu- can, community internet provider uh has a question. He was just saying everything comes through the county. They're working with other counties on the same thing and it all falls through the county.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
It makes it difficult from the county standpoint, when you've got all this money flying around and we're responsible for it. But yet we're not the ones out there spending.
Will you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's their job.
Well, that's what we hired him for.
And her question was, could we hire an individual to to keep up with all the expenditures and the state was, that's what you guys do.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Who's gonna be here handling the invoices and writing the checks on our, if y'all are managing this, how's that getting up?
I believe that would be the the, you know, San- Sandy, the the treasurer, correct?
But with every bill would have to be paid through the county. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
So how do we track, I guess we award, say, we came up with the water company and we have a water project for water lines. How do we make sure that they don't exceed their budget and they're staying on track? That's something you want to do or?
Yeah, yeah, that's something I'll work with you guys on for sure.
Okay. Yeah.
We're gonna do all the work.
So we're still managing the grant.
So they're gonna, they're gonna do all the um, the architects and. The uh, be the expectations, but I can relate to actually reflect, everything this grant is gonna be.
So back to Sandy's question, can we hire an extra person to put down there to ma- manage our, this town this funding? Did you hear me?
Sir, was that a question for me? I'm sorry.
Yeah, a question for you. Sandy's original question is, is we gotta handle these invoices and track it with our treasurer and our auditor's office. Can we hire an additional person out of this funding to handle?
Yep, absolutely. Yeah, that that, yeah, you can, there's admis- administrative costs are covered by by the grant, yeah.
Okay. So have you, have we been through all the slides?
Yeah, let me see. I think we were at the end. Let me double check.
Start it over.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Bass? Well, I've got, uh, I know you said we we had a little time. Uh one of my questions was, when do we need it? When do we need the projects that the Commissioners Court, governing body of the county? Says, okay, here's the projects we want to move forward. Cause here's what I heard this morning talking to one that's not present. He said, I would like to go with uh broadband, water. And then if there's anything left at the end, then spend it on uh of, you know. You can look at other projects, you know, at the, at the end. When do we need, when do you need your list nailed down?
I don't have a time period. Um, yeah, I I again, we just need to have the money obligated. By twenty twenty-four and and all spent by twenty twenty-six. So, you know, we've got plenty of time, so within the next couple of months, I would say, at the latest.
We don't have to turn them all in at one time.
No, yeah, exactly. No, well, a pri- a prioritized list, um because, you know, the money i- is distributed in two tranches. So you've guys got half now, I'm not sure, I presume, and I'm not sure when the other half um will um be coming in. I have that in my file somewhere. I'm not sure if anyone in the call knows that, but definitely, you know, when you can, yeah, next, okay, next year.
And those projects would need to go before Commissioners Court and get approval in Commissioners Court?
Yeah.
And I know what happened and it creates problems, but the CARES Act, when they come up and I don't. When that, when they threw it out there, said this is what the money can be spent on, well, then it kept changing.
Hmm.
Uh, what what's they said, this is the only thing the money can be spent on, and I'm gonna give you an example, uh roads. Could not be spent on roads, but then as it, as it developed and as we progressed through it, then road was allowed. And I I think there's some, some hope hesitances uh right now is that this might change. Do you see any or do you believe that any of the allowable expenses might change? Or is this gonna stay from start to finish?
Yeah. So I'm just, I'm taking notes here. That's a great question. I have not heard that in regards to the CARES Act. You know, if those like, if projects that were started um before. Um the rules changed, like were those grandfathered in? Was that the case at all in terms of the CARES Act?
No, it was, it it all, everything stayed in place that they said from the original onset. It was that at the very beginning, they said, okay, it cannot be spent for roads.
I see, they just add, they add.
Then they add it. It wasn't that they took anything out, but they added some stuff. Well, that changes things, because once you start down a path and then halfway down, you think, oh, well, now they're allowing this. Well, then that may have changed, you you make your decisions based on.
Yeah.
Information you have with the time.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you see, do you see that happening in this?
Yeah, again, great question. I'm, I I I unfortunately can't answer that at the moment. I will um run that by my director. Um he might have some more insight into that. I know right now we have the interim final rule, um which is what my presentation was based off of. And information was pulled from that and and the FAQ that they have. Um so, you know, that keyword being interim, so there will be a final rule that will be. Published by the Treasury Department um at some point in time. Um I'm I'm not sure off the top of my head when when the final rule will be out, um because again, the the current one is interim. Um but I will double check with with my director and ask him on about this question. Because, yeah, that's a good question. I've never had that come up and I wasn't familiar with that in regards to the CARES Act um and additional. allowable things being, being added to it. So I'll follow up with you on that too.
Does anyone have any question for Mr. Bass? All minds clear? Well, thank you for meeting with us, Mr. Bass.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you for your time, everyone. I'm gonna send this um, the PowerPoint presentation out, out to all the attendees. Additionally, the GFOA calculator, um also I'm gonna send that out. So you could input um your historical uh revenue information into that and 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 get an understanding of how much. Funds can be used for that category, um because we want to have that in mind um as you all begin narrowing down. Um the project ideas. But yeah, again, thank you for your time, everyone, and I look forward to making this happen and getting this money properly spent and allocated.
Okay. So the next step is getting that cost uh calculation work?
Yeah, I'll have that over to you, to you guys today and then with slide deck.
So is there anything that, wh- what's our next step?
Um, yeah, good running, do, right, in putting that um calculation information into there, getting that number. And then um start uh meeting internally um regarding um project ideas um based off. Based off of uh what, you know, I I covered in here and I'd be glad to sit in on those meetings um with you all. Um to advise or or guide or any, anything, any way I can help in that process. Um and then I'll set up uh an additional meeting cadence um with you all. I'm not sure who in this room would need to be involved in those meetings, but I do like to meet every two weeks. Just to make sure that we're moving along in some sort of fashion or a different fashions depending on where we are in the project, so.
Okay.
But I'll I'll get that list from uh Sandy on who will need to be in attendance going forward. I'm not sure if everyone in this, in this room or or some people.
Okay. Thank you, sir, for your time.
Yeah, thank you. I look forward to working with everyone. Bye, everyone.
Thank you.